Our work session for this evening.
And bond needs to be ready to go. Yeah, that's bond.
We don't mind, let's get quiet. All the men anyway, women allowed to speak as they wish. Uh, look at the work session, I want to look at Mr. Holly, first off about our board training, which is to take place, I think, in, in February. Mr. Holly.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Uh, you know, we've done a number of different things over the years for board training. We have the opportunity, we could, uh, bring AASB in. Uh, we've done training, I guess I would call it internal training, they may call it external training, but we've done training where we've gone over system data and things like this. And, uh, uh, I think we've all found it to be more valuable to use something that is focused on things that are important to us here at the system. So, Mr. Rhodes reached out to me and, uh, asked that I look at the board training. And so, I've got a few ideas I'll share over the next month or so with you, uh, that would be important to our local community and, and how, uh, it depends on our education, our school system and, and how we depend on them, uh, and some people, some speakers that would come lead it for us, um, at really no cost whatsoever to the board. Uh, we'd have to do the application, uh, apply, get approval from AASB. Ms. Goode, I think it's thirty days, uh, timeline. Two options I looked at was one of the last two weeks in February, uh, do it one evening, get it out of the way, or do it at the March board meeting, come in two hours before. And so, I kinda just wanted to see how y'all felt. I, I really, I kinda feel like I, I prefer a little bit the last two weeks in February, pick a Tuesday or a Thursday. I prefer not to do it on Wednesday, uh, but, uh, I don't know, does anybody have any comments or feelings one way or another on that?
Well, now that we're starting at four-thirty, that would being, we'd have to be here by two-thirty and that creates conflict with some of, like, me at work.
Yes, so, it, it might work to have a whole separate day for the board training, our whole board training, so, uh, does anybody have a problem with either the last Tuesday or Thursday of February right now that you know on your calendar?
Speak up if you do.
If, if nobody has a problem with that, we're gonna go probably one of those two weeks. Uh, Ms. Goode, I may ask you to send an email out to everybody once we nail the date down, but I'll speak, I'll, I'll get with our trainers, uh, probably since Christmas is over, we have and ask that they develop a, an agenda, a syllabus or something for us to go by so we can submit, uh, the paperwork to the School Board Association and, uh, get their blessing for it. If you have an idea that you'd rather go another route, I'm open to hear that too. I just, you know, it's whatever you, you may wanna do, whatever the wish of the board is, so, any other suggestions?
I know we have more than one that works. I don't work anymore. The one I ever did, but I don't really work anymore.
Well, no suggestions on topics then, so, we'll go with, uh, one of the, probably the last Tuesday or Thursday of February, uh, one of those two days. We would start at four-thirty, hopefully be out of here by six-thirty, and the topic will be decided, but we'll, we'll get something that's very relevant, uh, to the system, to this board, uh, to our schools and to our community, uh, unless, but in the meantime, over the next couple of weeks, if you have an idea, you wanna go with something else, uh, I'll be happy to pursue that too, but, uh, we'll get some details ironed out, let you know very early in January. Any questions? Alright, thank y'all.
Gonna decide that in January?
Well, well, I think it's pretty much decided, I'll just, I'll, I'll let Ms. Goode know the topic, the route we're going with it, just so everybody be a little prepared.
What week and what time, John?
The last week of February for the training, it'll either be a Tuesday or a Thursday. Uh, I, I prefer to give some of the people we invite for the training, to give them more than just one day to see if they could come, you know what I'm saying? I'd, I'd rather say, would a Tuesday or a Thursday evening work better for you, instead of just nailing it down tonight, if y'all are okay with that. So, if you can just put a placeholder on your calendar or something for one of those two days, from four-thirty to six-thirty. I don't, I, I'll be honest with you, I have not looked at any kind of sports schedules or anything else, I don't know how that conflicts with anything, but, uh, hopefully by six-thirty, you could still catch something if you needed to, so.
I guess we'll nail this down next, next month, January.
Yeah, I'll bring you the exact date.
Behind you, let us know.
Mr. Holmes, I might add, just for your consideration, to the last Tuesday of February, is current teacher conference status, that's just information, I'll give you, share that information.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, in y'all's packets tonight, y'all have the presentation for the school calendar, which we won't vote on it till January, but it's for the next two years, so it'd be twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And option one was voted on by all our employees that voted, and it was what passed, so y'all will be voting on it next year. Uh, it's gonna be very similar to our school calendar this year, so we'll be voting on that next year. I'm pleased to announce that on tonight's agenda, we have a pay incentive for our employees for extra duties they're performing of five hundred dollars, and that check will be, y'all approve it tonight, that check will be cut the last day of, not the last day, but the last working day of December. So, it'll be a five hundred dollar incentive for our employees. To thank them for all their hard work and the job they keep doing. Uh, this time I'm gonna trade over to Mr. Willis, uh, with the technology plan, and let him do a presentation right quick.
Sure, uh, I just wanna say, it's been all day, celebrating the fact that she's the fifth person. I believe you have in front of you, we sent these, the technology survey, I noticed from Mr. Dobbs earlier, some, one of his concerns was about connectivity in the classroom and so forth, uh, that's something the board has been very, uh, passionate about, I believe. We've got coming up our fifth year, our current network is looking at access point, that's our wifi in the classroom, we filed E-Rate, and just last week, we got funding approved for that, so that's over like, almost one point three million dollars of package that will be done over the next twelve months, and out of that, I believe the board, uh, somewhere around five hundred thousand that you have to put in for that. That's gonna be upgrading all of our switches and our access points, which should help us quite a bit in alleviating any connectivity issues. A lot of our connectivity issues that we've had in the past has been due to things such as fiber cuts or just, you know, we have a couple hundred switches, I believe it's nine hundred access points, you're gonna have issues from time to time, that's why we have the technology department to address that. But I felt good, looking at the survey, there was a lot of good things that came out of it. One of the things, uh, that was really exciting to me is that we're seeing the use of technology to communicate with parents and teachers and students more, and that's because of our school status platform that we're currently using. So, the technology plan itself is sort of built around that, the state encourages us to do our technology plan in a rather broad, uh, we, you want it broad and not narrow in scope, because technology changes so fast, as we learned when the pandemic hit, we had to move really quick to make things happen. So, you don't want it so narrow, so it's kinda broad with a focus toward your infrastructure. And then you start focusing toward the classroom, and one of the biggest changes we made that's different over the past four or five years, we're going drifting away, I should say, from projectors to large display panels that are interactive and touch. Uh, that's what I think I showed at the last board meeting, we're putting it less more to cost. Uh, there's always gonna be room for improvement, I feel really confident about where we're at with technology and where we're going, we have a very competent staff that continues to improve, if we can hold on to, that's always gonna be an issue, but it's true for all school systems, because it's hard to compete with the public sector. We're continuing to work on communications in the classrooms, as Mr. Dobbs and I discussed, about cellular, I'm gonna look at that moving forward, how we might be able to help in the buildings, but when I step over in the safety area, cellular is not what you need to really focus on, and that's why over the past five or six years, we've been working on the phone systems in the classrooms and the system, where there is a phone in every classroom, and we're also taking over intercom systems. If you drive around out in the schools, you'll see where, uh, we have put in horns on the exterior buildings, so when an announcement's made in the building, you're hearing outside the building as well, because it's about campus safety from that standpoint. You know, just on and on and on with things we're trying to do, uh, I know we're talking about lockdown, but, uh, I wanna move toward that in the future, where students or our teachers in a real situation of lockdown, and, you know, I don't know if you saw the video of the shooting in Michigan, where the students wouldn't let the shooter in because of that conversation, and we're, we've gotta have communications in places of safety situations to where the principal or someone that the students would know, can call the classroom directly and say, "That is a police officer," let them in, uh, because you could have someone injured in there, uh, so, those situations. So, anything about the tech plan or the survey that you, in any time, could ask me?
Mr. Willis, uh, first of all, I appreciate all you've done, and, and really, for a system our size, I hear very little issues, but what, what I would like to ask, I guess, it just came to me a second ago, is our, our coverage on our school campuses, like, uh, I've been to a few basketball games in the last couple of weeks, and in, in gyms, uh, some of the places I've been, our wifi coverage is non-existent whatsoever, we don't have any in a gym, uh, and then, and then I've been told, I can't remember the school, and I probably wasn't naming it now, but that, that their internet was very slow, and, and it makes me wonder if all this camera stuff we're doing and all that's eating up bandwidth or something, I don't know, uh, is there plans to address specifically speed and coverage on campuses?
Okay, so the speed and all, we currently have a ten gigabyte pipe between campuses, which is very large, uh, shouldn't be any issues there, our current internet bandwidth is one point five, uh, tray monitors that constantly, we're not seeing a lot of issues there. What we're seeing, when we talk about connectivity issues, is sometimes the platform they're trying to use, like the ISIP or I-RAD even in the classroom, we're gonna continue, we'll never get every little spot, but that's kinda where we go, I think, you know, the equivalent we've got, like I said, is five years old, so upgrading to this, it's not only one, should alleviate some of that, not all of it, I'll never get a solve of what's happening at the highest level itself sometimes, and why it speaks to this, but we can, you know, continue to try to improve that, uh, we're going up to a higher wifi signal, if you will, the newer signal, that's gonna be the next generation, uh, you know, that, that's gonna be something the board has to address just about in five or six years, keeping that coming and that flowing, uh, that is a concern, I know, you know, a lot of times when we have connectivity issues, it's literally things like a virus that's got, that's causing the chatter, or it's particular devices, our switch goes down, and we're trying to determine why that switch went down, so, yeah, you know, we're doing battery backups and those things, even on the phone systems, we're currently, I meant yesterday, we're currently in the process of moving our phone systems at each campus to a cellular pillar, so if the network goes down, the phone system cuts over to cellular in those situations, so, yeah, that, that has to be one of our primary purposes.
One, one other comment, that, that when I sat down here, I was just looking through the survey comments, and, and I know, and this may, Mr. Superintendent, it may go to some directors out here, uh, traveling around school, uh, traveling around the state, this is not just specific to Morgan County, but to comment an individual made about needing training on Power School and entering grades and stuff, uh, I hear how much folks dislike Power School, and, and I imagine a lot of it is just because it's a transition, and I hate any, I hate when they upgrade a website that I'm used to using, and I think we all do, uh, it, but I'm sure it has its bugs too, but just as a reassurance, we are doing some trainings, so our, our faculty and staff know that, how to use Power School or something like that.
It's a, this is my fifth or sixth CIST transition, and every time, you know, the first year is gonna be a heavy, heavy lift.
Yeah.
I spent most of my past three weeks since we, y'all last met, working with Power School things and so forth, uh, just before I walked in, working on how they're going to enter semester exam grade, the way we thought we could do it is not gonna work, so, before I send that out, I'm gonna work, maybe work, and we'll just have to do it. The good thing about moving to Power School, it's gonna be more data security. Up until this, you guys were totally responsible for that data, because it's set right back there in the closet. Now, you get to share that responsibility with the state, which is good, because they can secure, uh, uh, they've got a better team, or not a better team, but they've got people dedicated to the data security. Now, I think in another year, year and a half, it'll get better, uh, we had training at the very beginning, where we hired people to come in, teach Power School out at every campus, I worked with Dr. Humphries and, uh, Mr. Patterson, who organized that, got that done. Next week, I've got training Tuesday and Thursday, after Christmas, we've got training to start developing scheduling for the next year, then we've got training for the end of the year, half, close half the year, we're looking at, uh, platforms that we can add to this to help at the local school level, you know, one of our biggest obstacles with it is now attendance, because it's so different than what we're used to, so we're trying to find the best, but I am fortunate that one of my best friends is now gonna be the state student data specialist for Dr. Mackey, and she reports directly to Dr. Mackey, and we're going to be a pilot system, we're supposed to be a pilot system moving forward, so they'll have some input in it. Uh, going back, one thing said about the gymnasiums and wifi.
Yeah.
I want gyms with coverage, uh, technically, E-Rate doesn't supply internet for that.
Okay.
So, you know, that's one thing we have to kind of watch, we're not throttling or anything like that, but, you know, we'll never, until they develop devices that can really broadcast big range, and we really focus on that, you know?
Well, I, I just, my, my desire on connectivity campus-wide, on any campus, is we get to the day that I don't care if a child's on the playground, in the gym, wherever they have connectivity, you know what I'm saying, rural school or whatever, uh, just because it, it's fear, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And I think, I think this board, when we have funding, uh, if there's something we can do to hit, push that initiative along, let's, let's get it done, you know what I'm saying, that's, that's my only thing on it, let's, let's get connectivity to everywhere and anywhere we can, so.
Well, since he said that, let's go one step further. I get phone calls where parents cannot access information on their students like they're supposed to, you know, they cannot look up grades, they can't look, look up, and I'm one of those that cannot do that.
Okay, so, we have sent everything that we can out to the schools to distribute and to do that, now, if there's an issue, I'm not aware of it, and I see the tickets come in, we address that, but the local school sends us that information of who's not able to, and who they are, and we try to address that, uh, there are instructions out there, there's two platforms that parents can go to right now, one of the school, which is something we used last year, and the teachers have, and the local school has that information to help in individual cases, that login, and we just released a few weeks ago, because I delayed it due to several bugs that's going on with it, there's a Power School and the parents don't work that you can go in, and you have to set that up, and we've released the instructions out to the parents, but I'll, tomorrow morning, I'll try to get you all, everything I've got, and we delayed it because of those bugs, and I'm glad we did, because a lot of systems, they did it early, uh, parents log in, they see grades of students in another system, so, yeah, it was, this is a mess, but, I'll just straight up, the school agency and Power School are not sinking this week, they've had a major issue with that, they're working on it, and of course, everybody thinks something we did, no, we, you know, it's, it's a national issue, but we just have to work through it, it's gonna get better, just if it is, then, well, more gray hair. Anything else on that?
On the technology plan for West Morgan Construction Tech, I think there's something in there that's called voice lift, what is that?
Yeah, go to the next slide, pardon me there. Yeah, uh, this, everything you see on the left is what I consider, kind of like discussion I heard, I, I hate to say what my budget numbers are, because, believe it or not, vendors do watch our board meetings and try to get inside information, but, uh, I was given a budget, I hope it is what our technology is, and so, everything I'm doing technology-wise, I'm trying to keep it under that budget, and everything on the left is what I consider to be, uh, you have to have that to open the door, in other words, to teach you everything else, so our network equipment, and then the voice lift, that's your intercom paging, uh, and it's also video equipment, which is the audio enhancement system, where you can do the alert, and we've already got that ordered, uh, the network equipment's ordered, the, uh, V-Sonic panels we have, telephones we have, security cameras are ordered, door access controls, they tell me it shouldn't be much of an issue to get, so, does that make sense?
Going more deep, you said it's like audio enhancement, so it's, that's a program that we piloted that we said wasn't being used and we weren't looking at it before?
Well, so, we met with West Morgan High School and their people, and they really liked it, we showed them everything it does, now, there's two parts to that you gotta remember, there's the voice part, and then there's the video part, and the voice part ties, is their intercom system, it is where the teacher can walk around, not only with a microphone to amplify out, but it also provides them a safety button, if they hold it, it calls the office and there's a board there, but it also does the recording, I think, systems around us are all putting classroom cameras in, I just imagine the board would like this school to be the as technology advanced as we can make when we open the door, and that's, you know, that's the direction everyone's headed, does that make sense?
Hate to cut this off, but we're running out of time.
Okay, everything on the right is things that we'll try to add if it's within budget.
Mr. Wagner, you wanna give us an update on the construction projects?
Board, Mr. Elliott, happy to be here this afternoon to give an update on your construction projects, uh, would you hit the enable editing and launch that presentation, sort of fill up the screen, I, I want you to see all the photographs that are in here as large as you can, has nothing to do with my, my vision declining as I age. If you go to slide three, so this, this is an update, uh, on West Morgan High School and the Dambel High School Athletic Facility. Very, alright, go forward one more, please. First, we'll talk about the, the financial data, uh, so at the top of this spreadsheet is, is for us in the twenty sixteen amendment to capital improvement plan budget drawdown, which is, just a fancy way of saying, you know, the project's covered by amendment two to that original agreement, or West Morgan and Dambel, so, right now, we have, uh, approved budgets, available funding of a little over thirty-three million, we have financial commitments in place of, uh, twenty-eight point five million, which leaves us remaining funding available of four point seven, uh, so we're in good, good physical shape here on these projects, uh, right now, the cost is, uh, twenty-eight point five, uh, there, there's some additional costs coming as we get into furniture acquisition and some additional, uh, technology purchases and whatnot, but most of the, most of the cost is known at this point and locked in. Can progress to the next slide. So, this is a drawdown of the West Morgan High School, uh, budget, and so you can see where we started off with that, uh, almost twenty-four million dollar overall budget, and then it just draws down, shows each commitment, uh, from professional services all the way down through contractors, as well as acquisition of technology equipment, uh, it's got the purchases on there, uh, that Mr. Willis just provided an overview for, and, uh, so as you see, we, we still are sitting in, in good shape financially on this project, with our remaining funding of, you know, four and a half million dollars available. So, we, we, we do have to, uh, go through and complete the furniture acquisition, and so we're, we're reviewing those items now, starting to get some quotes on that, and I'm negotiating with the furniture vendor, uh, so I hope to have something, maybe for the January agenda, uh, to make some recommendations for purchase of furniture for this project. Can you progress to the next slide, please? So, this is the drawdown, uh, for the budget for Dambel High School, and again, we, we started out, uh, that project with approximately nine and a half million dollar overall budget, and this is showing the financial commitments to date, pulling down the professional services as well as the, uh, construction contractor, and so, this, this project's much tighter than, than West Morgan, uh, we're only sitting on a surplus of fifteen thousand dollars right now, and I haven't plugged any numbers in there for furniture or technology purchases, uh, which, mind you, on the athletic facility, we won't have a lot of furniture or technology purchases to make, so that's one thing in our favor, but we will be relying on some of the funding from, from West Morgan, some of that surplus funding, pull it over to Dambel, uh, more than likely, because we, we've got, we're sitting on fifteen thousand dollars right now, uh, to make furniture and technology purchases that, that we do need to make. I'd also like to note, though, we, the construction contract has contingency money built into that contract, so that's not accounted for up here, so, uh, we do have a, quite a healthy allowance that's built into the construction contract, and hopefully, at the end of the day, we'll, we'll not use all that money and that can roll back, and, and hopefully we can use that to purchase the furniture and technology, technology equipment that we need to purchase on this project. Can you progress to the next slide? So, this is just a quick, uh, overview of West Morgan, uh, next slide, please. Contract cost, uh, and this is what I was alluding to on Dambel, we, we have allowances and credits that are built into these construction contractors and their general contractors, so right now, at West Morgan, we're sitting on approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of allowances and credits that haven't been allocated to anything, and so we've got that money to spend on any owner requested revisions or any unforeseen conditions that may come up along the way as we, you know, complete this couple of work. As far as the contract time, the revised completion date on this project is January sixteenth, uh, we've granted fifty-four days overall throughout the course of the project due to inclement weather that exceeded the five-year average, and due to that, uh, buried debris that we encountered under the building pad when we were getting that in early on, uh, so you'll see that we have eight percent of our construction time remaining, and we've got twenty-seven percent of our construction costs remaining, and so with this stage in a project, I want those numbers to be really close together, so what that, what that's telling you, this project is not going to finish January sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, now, the contractor has given us a revised schedule, showing that they will deliver this project in March, and I have, uh, some doubts about that personally myself, I feel more, more comfortable that they'll deliver this project in May, maybe June, I am confident that we'll have no problem getting students in this facility, you know, for August, but, uh, right now, that, that's where we stand on this facility, is, is the contractor's saying March, and I'm, I'm thinking May is more realistic. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial view of West Morgan from the west, so you can see that the asphalt boundaries being on the main drive and on that, uh, west parking area, you can see that the roof is, is almost a hundred percent complete, uh, they've got windows in, they're putting, uh, doors and glazing in, so the building is almost in the dry, and that, that's good, because once the building gets in the dry, uh, we'll get permanent power soon, the contractor's ready for permanent power now, we're just waiting on, on the, the utility provider to get up there and get the switch. And once we get permanent power, uh, they've got mechanical equipment that's being set in place, and, uh, we'll be able to energize the mechanical equipment, start conditioning the space, then all the finishes can progress once we get that space conditioned. If you'll just scroll through the, the pictures, I know we're, we're pressed for time, just kinda scroll through the photographs, uh, most of the brick veneer is, uh, the, the building envelope is, is basically sealed from the, the roof. Most of the brick veneer is up, the building envelope is basically sealed from the roof, the wall standpoint. That's the main entrance tower still under construction. This is going back around to the east side, they're getting that drive, they've got that curving gutter board. That's looking out into the courtyard. So those are some of the mechanical units that are starting to set out in the courtyard. This is in the media center. That is in the auxiliary gymnasium. This is looking down a corridor, so you can see we do have ceiling tiles that are stored on site. We've got flooring products stored on site. It won't be too long, we'll be having above ceiling inspections with state inspector and the engineers, as you see the ceiling grids going in. That's casework that's been delivered, it's being stored in some areas out there, but they haven't started installing any casework yet, it's just being stored. This is the exhaust hood in the kitchen. There was a big concern about the delivery on this item. Some of these, some of these items are having long lead times due to the current situation of the pandemic. Right now, we're concerned about the freezer and cooler arriving in time to get this facility open. You know, it's critical, we've got to be able to prepare food and serve food to get students in this facility. So right now that's a challenge is we're hearing long lead times on getting the cooler freezer in. Dabble High School is next. As far as the contract costs, and again, this is the construction contract, we have almost 300,000 of allowances and credits that are built into the construction contract. So earlier I alluded that we had 15,000 that was unallocated on that project. That didn't include this almost 300,000 that's built into the construction contract. So hopefully we will not utilize all of that money during construction and we'll be able to fund the purchase of furniture, you know, any furnishings or technology equipment that's needed for that, which will be minimal again. Contract time, the revised completion date for this project is May the 15th. They've only had 12 days granted for weather that exceeded the five-year average. 46% of the construction time remains, 80% of the construction cost remains. And again, I want to start seeing these numbers close together. And when I see this and I look at the schedule, it tells me that they're not on target to finish this project on May 15th. The contractor's thinking they're going to finish this project in June and I, I think that's doable. They got off to a slow start. It is a tough side out there. If we can get these foundations in, get out of the ground, it's going to really be in our favor where we can progress this work. But, you know, we had similar issues at West Morgan where the site is just, once it, once it gets rain on it, it takes a while to recover and to de-water and to get going again. So it's just tough coming out of the ground with the project this time of year and that's what they're facing out here at Dabble. These are photographs, this is coming through the main entrance there, the parking lot into the lobby area. That's looking down the south wall of the gymnasium. So they've got CMU starting to come in up above the footings. They're digging and pouring footings, laying, laying CMU block on those footings. And that concludes this presentation. Are there any questions on the project?
Thank you, Mr. Bagman.
We're going adjourned for about?
Agenda changes.
Oh, that's not?
Yes, we did, we did those in this.
We do those now or later?
Yeah, we did it right there.
I know, but.
It's adoption.
Announcement of agenda changes.
Yes, sir. Addict to do agenda is not in the form of regulations or the signature of the board members. But change, group 17, the board members will see the appropriate supporting documentation for those changes earlier than that.
We'll adopt those to the meeting, do we? We are out of time. We got, but the report's been good. We're going to save the comments to the end of the board meeting. I think that'd be more appropriate, we'll have more time to do that. We have so long-winded board members up here. Well, we thank Mr. Willis, we thank Mr. Bagman. Let's take about two or three minutes and adjourn this, this work session and come back at, we got, let's take two minutes, come back at five after. We're going to get started promptly at five after six, with or without you. We didn't ask you for anything down there, sir.
Just make sure you keep me straight on all of the areas. Then we do it again this year, it's official. You're going to go down through here and she, you know, call the word prayer, prayers, you will welcome everybody. And then you'll ask her to repeat it again and then we adopt it, that way it's official.
Oh, no, that's where it's expected.
Appreciate it, man.
Is the West Morgan faculty requested out on his own the agenda?
Yeah, different.
Contract change request?
No, it's going to be on the January. We didn't get permission for this afternoon. Before changing code, that's the real one. And you ask this bill, it's going to be on the January. We didn't get it for that afternoon. And you ask Mr. Connolly, it should be on the January. And we say this, wait a minute, that's the chiller. Ask her what it was that she.
It's not her, but I mean, it's nothing else.
Yeah, yeah, it's something, something.